Well, then we have a forum. So I will call the meeting of the City of Lathua Village City Council to order. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Roll call, Mayor Garrett.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Present.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Present.
Councilmember Siddiqui.
Here.
And Councilmember Stallings.
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Now, I invite everyone to say the Pledge of Allegiance. And I have my flag, so look towards the City Hall. And pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'll call for approval of the agenda. That's where any one of you all will jump in to make a motion.
Oh, I was on mute, I'm sorry. I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pardon me, I'm sorry, roll call, roll call. Gosh, I. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
Councilmember Stallings.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Now, all items listed under consent agenda are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the Siddiqui's council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and discussed separately immediately after consent agenda approval in its normal sequence on the regular agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus the August 17th study session minutes.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Can I please have a roll call? Vote.
Roll call, Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
Councilmember Stallings.
Yes.
And Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you. You had a discussion for.
Yeah, just to one, one very minor point, but it makes a big difference, I guess. Page five of 76, the August 17th study session minutes in the middle under public comments. Says the average cost of homeowners will be 3.9176%. That's 3.9176 mils, not percent.
Okay.
And that's it.
Thank you. Next up will be the consideration for approval of the monthly dispersment reports for the month of August 2020.
Mayor Garrett, can we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes that were just corrected?
Okay, sure.
Yeah, I'll make, I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to approve the August 17th, 2020 study session minutes.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in a second. Is there any further discussion behind it? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
Councilmember Stallings.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
And Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you. Next, is the consideration for approval of the monthly dispersment reports for the month of August 2020?
I'll make a motion to approve the monthly distribution reports for a total of $578,235.50, which is comprised of various dollars from the general fund, the major and local road fund, the capital fund, the downtown development authority, and the water and sewer funds.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
Councilmember Stallings.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you. The next, we would have a consideration for the acceptance of the department reports.
I'll make a motion to approve the department reports.
Second. It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Stallings.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
And Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you. Next, we have a presentation from State Representative Kyra Harris Bolden.
Well, hello, Mayor Garrett, and hello to this honorable body. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. It's so good to see your faces through everything that's happening. I just wanted to make sure that I was updating you on things that were going on. Obviously, through COVID, our district was hit extremely hard. And we had unemployment claims, but we were not as worse off as other districts. So we had about 500 unemployment claims come to the office, and all but 100 have been resolved. And so if you have any constituents that are asking unemployment questions, please direct them to my office. We'll be happy to help. And the phone number to my office is 517-373-1788. Again, it's 517-373-1788. You can also email kyrabolden@house.mi.gov. And if I'm able to, I can pop that information in the chat. Just want to announce that myself and Senator Jeremy Moss are going to have a virtual coffee hour on October 12th at 5:00 PM, so that we can kind of give a broader update on what's been happening throughout COVID. There's been a lot of legislation moving. But just to update you guys on a couple of things. We finally are sending the expungement bill package to the governor. It's going to help many people across the state of Michigan and many constituents in this district. So basically, it's the clean slate bill package that you may have been hearing about. I was able to get two criminal justice reform bills passed into law. The second one was around March, and so that's when COVID hit. So just wanted to update the body on that. There's been several things going on with education. And obviously, you know, our superintendent, Jennifer Green, has been awesome. There have been, there were, there are a couple of things in the budget that will go more into depth if you're able to attend the coffee hour, or just feel free to contact my office. But I did end up voting yes on the budget for next year. You know, we were looking at a $2 or $3 billion loss. We were able to at least stop the hemorrhaging. And we were actually able to, you know, stay some of our programs and allow for an increase in funding for our schools per pupil increase. So, you know, it's not, not the greatest budget, but it will get us through this very difficult time. So I will entertain any questions that this honorable body may have. But again, I just wanted to give a brief update and let everyone know that we do have a virtual coffee hour coming up. And you can email or call my office for that Zoom link.
Well, thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions? Statements?
Congratulations on this expungement bill, the clean slate bill. It's really huge.
It is.
That very, very huge.
Yes.
Look forward to hearing more about that.
Absolutely.
Oh, go ahead, Selim.
Kyra, do you know where does the redistricting initiative stand? You know, the proposal too that was passed? And do you, give us a quick update on what you know as far as where that's at right now?
Sure, absolutely. And thank you for that question. So the participants for the redistricting commission have been selected. Their information is actually public, not their address and things like that, but their names. If you go to the Secretary of State's website, one participant did resign. And so they will have to replace that individual, obviously, before anything progresses. But the timeline for the new lines is supposed to be around March. But we will, I mean, that, that part has yet to be seen. But the participants have been selected and looking to replace one of the members that resigned.
Great, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. You're going to put your own information into the chat?
Yes.
Okay, I appreciate that.
And that's a two-year process, correct? The redistricting.
So, so the, the lines will be based, so this is a plug for the census, which I know that Lathua Village has been very good at. But not only the census determine federal dollars that come to our respective communities, but it determines the count and who's represented for what seat. So seats are determined on the congressional level and the state level based upon population of the census. And so if we have a particular portion of the population that's not counted, then you're going to have inaccurate distribution of lines. And so what, what happens is the, the panel is chosen currently. The lines are supposed to come out when the census data comes out, so around March or so. And the lines will be implemented in 2022.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
Oh, thanks so much, Representative Bolden. Thanks for supporting Lathua Village all these years. And yeah, just extend my appreciation to Senator Moss as well.
Absolutely. And I'm hoping to get the appropriation back in the budget.
Yeah.
Many of you know, I was able to get appropriation for infrastructure for Lathua Village. And when COVID hit, the governor just kind of vetoed all special projects. I mean, rightfully so, because we needed that money for other places. But fighting really hard to make sure that we get that back in the, in another budget.
Yeah.
No, we definitely appreciate that. And I appreciate you letting me know that that's what you did. So we appreciate it. And of course, you're invited to come back anytime that you would like to keep us updated. And if there is anything else, anyone have any questions? Is there anybody in the chat that may have any questions?
Okay. Well, thank you, Representative. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much. And I will put my information in the chat for any further discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Take care.
Um, next, we will have a public comment for items that are on the agenda. The limit is three minutes to speak. Is there anyone that would like to be heard? Nobody's hands up for anything, Kelda?
Nobody's hands up.
Okay, thank you. We don't have any public hearings, so we'll move right into the action items. First up is going to be the consideration for approval of the Schedule A public hearing on October 19th, 2020 for the reprogramming of the 2018 and 2019 Community Development Black Grant.
Mayor and councilmembers, if you recall, each year you have a public hearing for the designation of the Community Development Black Rent Funds. And for the program years of 2018 and 19, I believe the amounts were $7,137 and $7,000 in 2019. Those funds are currently unspent. So we are asking to be able to reallocate those towards the cost sharing for the acquisition of the recreation van, which is used for a lot of senior programming. So as part of that process, we would need to have a public hearing to do that reprogramming. And then related to that, the $2020 would then, which were originally scheduled to be used for the purchase of the van, will then be reallocated for senior program.
Thank you very much. I have a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing on October 19th, 2020 for the reprogramming of the 2018 and 2019 CBBG grant money.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, excuse me, roll call.
Roll call. Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
And Councilmember Stallings.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you. Next, we'll have the consideration for approval of the appointment to election, to the Election Commission.
I don't know if the clerk wants to handle this, but for each of your elections, you appoint a member of the city council to serve on the Election Commission, and they will be meeting immediately following today's council session. So we need a motion to appoint someone to serve on the Election Commission.
I don't, I don't have a problem serving on it. If, if there's no one.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to appoint Donna Stallings as the, to the Election Commission.
Second.
Is it, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, roll call, please.
Roll call, Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
Councilmember Stallings.
Yes.
And Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Motion carry. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is the election of the Michigan Municipal League Liability and Property Pool Board of Directors.
This is for the election of the Board of Directors representative to serve on the Michigan Municipal League Liability and Property Pool. And the candidates are George Osinek. He was a current appointee, the mayor of City of Greenville. Melissa Johnson, she's a current appointee, the mayor of City of Chelsea. Sue Osborne, who, I'm sorry, those will be new appointees. Sue Osborne is an incumbent, the mayor of Fenton. And Dave Post is the current incumbent, the mayor of Hillman.
Thank you.
So I'll make a motion to accept the appointment, the election of Michigan Municipal League Liability and Property Pool Board of Directors. It's read.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Roll call. Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
Councilmember Stallings.
Yes.
And Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you. Next is the proclamation for the National Recovery Month. And I'm trying to pull that up.
So you have the Resolution Honoring National Recovery Month designating September 2020. In honor of that, I don't know if you want the entire thing read or just the resolved paragraph.
Go ahead, knock yourself out.
Thanks. Whereas substance abuse, substance use recovery is important for individual well-being and vitality as well as for families, communities, and businesses. And according to the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration in 2018, approximately 20.3 million people aged 12 or older had a substance use disorder. And we will continue to educate and raise awareness of the risks and potential harm associated with prescription drug misuse. And we believe everyone facing substance use disorders deserve the benefit of recovery. And stigma and stereotypes associated with substance use disorders often keep people from seeking treatment that could improve their quality of life. And substance abuse disorders occur when the recurrent use of alcohol and/or drugs causes clinically or functionally significant impairments, such as health problems, disability, and failure to meet major responsibilities at work, school, or home. And substance use disorder recovery is a journey of healing and transformation, enabling people to live in a community of their choice while striving to achieve his or her full potential. And substance use disorder recovery benefits individuals with substance use disorders by focusing on their abilities to live, work, learn, and fully participate and contribute to our society, and also enriches the culture of our community. Now, therefore, be resolved that the City of Lathua Village hereby recognize September 2020 as National Recovery Month, and calls upon our citizens, governmental agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit our state to increasing awareness and understanding of substance use and need for appropriate and accessible services to promote recovery. And that's attested to today, the 20th of September 2020, and signed by all of you.
Thank you very much. Who would like to take the, or do the motion to accept the proclamation?
Make a motion to accept that proclamation regarding National Recovery Month.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion behind it? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
Councilmember Stallings.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Next, we would have the proclamation for the Resolution Honoring, Honoring National Suicide Prevention Month for September 2020.
This is the resolution designating September 2020 as National Suicide Prevention Month. And I would gladly give the opportunity to someone else who would like to read that.
So the Resolution Honoring National Suicide Prevention Month, whereas September is known as National Suicide Prevention Month and is intended to help raise awareness surrounding suicide prevention resources available in the community. And whereas World Suicide Prevention Day is observed each year on September 10th, and whereas suicidal thoughts can affect everyone regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income level, religion, or background. And whereas, according to the CBC, each year more than 48,000 people die by suicide. And whereas suicide is the second leading cause of death for people 10 to 34 years of age, the fourth leading cause among people 35 to 54 years of age, and the eighth leading cause among people 55 to 65 years of age. And whereas organizations like the National Alliance on Mental Illness, NAMI, and National Suicide Prevention Lifeline, 80273 Talk, work to help individuals in crisis and provide resources to shed light on this highly stigmatized topic. And whereas every member of our community should understand that throughout life struggles, we all need the occasional reminder that we are all silently fighting our own battles. And whereas the Oakland County Health Network, OCHN, is committed to being a zero suicide organization and cultivating a network of providers who are engaged in the zero suicide philosophy. Now, there be it resolved that the City of Lathua Village hereby recognizes September 2020 as a National Suicide Prevention Month, and calls upon our citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit our state to increasing awareness and understanding of suicide prevention and the need for appropriate and accessible services to assist individuals in crisis. This is attested to this day, 20, excuse me, to this 28th day of September 2020 from myself, Mayor Pro Tim, Bruce Cantor, Councilmember Ian Ferguson, Salim Siddiqui, and Donna Stallings.
Make a motion to approve. Make a.
Go ahead.
It's been moved in second.
I think we got to say what the motion to approve is.
I make a motion to approve the Honoring National Suicide Prevention Month for September 2020.
Second. It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Stallings.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
And Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you very much. Um, next, city administrator report.
Thank you. A few things to update you on. Very pleased to report that we received notification that the City of Lathua Village has been awarded $13,000 for the first responders hazard pay premiums program, which will go to our police department officers for their work during the initial outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. The clerk has a video of the elections update so that people can have easily accessible and understandable information in regards to absentee ballots and the voting process. And she may have some additional details at the end of my report. Wanted to let you know that we're moving forward with this urgent promotional exam that's scheduled for December 14th. And as I mentioned in the study session, we're about to kick off the police labor negotiations. I also sent out an email today in regards to the governor's most recent executive orders expanding the capacity for indoor and outdoor gatherings on October 9th. So apparently my plea worked a little bit. But relative to how that impacts us here for City Hall, in particular, the community room, looking at the calculations, the period, we would be able to allow up to 50 people to be in the community room. They will still have to adhere to the requirements for the building in that they attest that they are without any of the symptoms, as well as they are required to wear face covering. And Councilmember Stallings had asked in the study session if there would be any adjustments to the rates. That has not been determined at this time. But we will be looking at overall, what is the policy relative to how we're going to actually implement this going forward? And the start date for that is October 9th. So we have basically a week to further assess how best to implement. And I believe I sent out to you a letter from Dr. Pernick in regards to donation he was willing to make for communities to have the highest percentage or number of voters. And he would make a donation to a local nonprofit and, or initiative by the city. And a couple that we had suggested was the Friends of the Parks and the Friends, I'm sorry, Friends of the Community Garden and Friends of the Dog Park. So I just wanted to get a kind of sense if there were preferences amongst you relative to which one to suggest back to him.
You got mine, right?
Yes.
You got mine?
I didn't see yours.
I, I basically said the first, the first two. I mean, the third one, yeah, you got that.
Okay.
Friends of the Children's Garden. I didn't respond to your email. I apologize.
Okay.
What were those choices again, Cheryl?
I think Donna is on mute.
I'm sorry. I was going to agree with the Children's Garden or the Dog Park as well.
So I guess the options are now expanded. So the Dog Park, the Community Garden, the Children's Garden, or the Lathua Village Community Foundation.
I'd pick the Community Garden, the Children's Garden.
I second that.
I did too. I heard that.
Okay, there's one. But the Community Garden is not the Children's Garden, so.
Right.
Where is the commute, they're in the same, so we got to pick one?
Right.
Okay.
Children's Garden.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I'll go with Ian, Children's Garden.
It's fine with me.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess that's a consensus. And the other thing.
For the Dog Park, actually.
Well, hopefully we'll win because of our voter turnout regardless. And there's always opportunities for the listening audience to contribute to any of those initiatives on their own.
That's what I do have a question for because I saw that in Chris's, um, Chris's report that they finally have the Friends of the Dog Park put together and that they sent something out for donations and I never saw anything.
I don't think I have either. So he's on vacation this week, so he may not have gotten around to it before he left for vacation. So I can follow up when he returns. And the other thing I wanted to get a little bit of guidance from you was relative to the Dr. Martin Luther King programming. We received an invitation from the Southfield Dr. Martin Luther King Task Force. And typically the last couple of years, we have placed an ad in their program book to, to announce and encourage their participants to also participate in our program. We hadn't gotten as far as to even look at programming ourselves, but I didn't know if you had a sense of if and how. And theirs is going to be remote. So I didn't know if it made sense to allocate dollars for what would really be a much smaller program, if, if any, that we had here.
To have, you're asking us about a program or to participate by putting the ad in there?
It's both.
Okay.
And the ad last two years, I believe, was a five hundred dollar ad.
Okay. We should support with the ad. Just my opinion, being a part of it in that way. Is there a reason why we would not?
Well, the, the last two years, the ad has served the dual purpose of promoting our own event. And there's a high probability that we won't have a, a program ourselves. So the ad would basically just be extending best wishes to them.
Well, I still, yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, Kelly.
I think that we still should put an ad in there. We have been, um, every year except a particular year where we had a different city manager. But I do sit on that board also, so I feel like I'm a little biased to that, too. So, um, you know, depending on, you know, what we want to allocate to that, I would be also willing to donate towards the ad.
Okay, so I.
I, I really do feel like we need to put it, we should put an ad in, and I don't know if we, personal donations are necessary, are they? But I definitely think we should be a part, Lathrow should be a part of it.
Do they need actual dollars? I mean.
Yeah.
Or take the, take that money and give it right to them.
Do what?
You said the ad is five hundred dollars?
Yeah.
That's the size of the ad that we've obtained in the past, so. And typically there has to be some nexus for us to be expanding advertising dollars, but I just wanted to get a sense from you on which direction to go before working through the contents of if, if and what that ad would say.
Right, but if we did, if we did an ad, it has to promote Lathrow in somehow, in some fashion, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, it's always promoted, it's always promoted later by just saying congratulations to the MLK Task Force. Like I said before, there hasn't, there's only been one year since me being on council that we did not participate in putting the ad in the, um, in their, their souvenir book and had nothing to, you know, we only just recently in the last two years have put ads in it to generate people to come to our own, our own program.
That's, that's what I was wondering, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's also, it is also to, to, it is also an opportunity for us to talk about something that we've accomplished as a city, right? My phone went out for a second. As a city over the last year or so, we have, we have some great accomplishments that through the congratulation to them, we can also talk about something that we've achieved, so.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah.
And we can even try to figure out if there's something we can even do virtually. We just have not had those conversations because our attention is elsewhere. But now that we know, we can take a closer look at what that might look like and at the very least the content of the ad for the air program book. And I think that concludes my report. I will be taking off a few days next week, and I think the Monday and Tuesday of the week after. You don't want me here next week.
So when we see you again, you'll be a different. Things will change.
That's true.
That's true.
Thank you. I appreciate it. City Attorney, do you have anything to say if you can chime in there, if you can hear us? Put it in the chat if you have something. Oh, there you go.
Lake Superior is pretty cold. I've been on the call, so I don't know if my name came up or my phone number, but I've been listening.
That's good.
Of course, Lake Superior is cold.
Well, that's where I'm sitting now, so.
Except there is a place that's up there, I can't remember the street, but it's something, it's the hot springs is the one part that's really, really warm. Go there.
I haven't found that yet, but I'll look tomorrow.
Oh, that's in Marquette, though. That's in Marquette.
Mayor Gallit, Mayor.
Who?
I told you I'm not fully functional. But perhaps Clerk Tally may want to offer a couple updates. And before you even do that, Councilmember Stallings, I emailed and I believe texted you the information for the Election Commission Zoom meeting sign on, so hopefully you've received that.
I did get it.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, um, yes, I was going to get to Clerk Tally. But if you would like to go now, please feel free back yourself up.
Thank you. Just a few updates. I am in the process of mailing ballots out. I mailed out over eight hundred of them today. So I will be mailing more as the week goes on. I have a lot of people coming in requesting them. That's fine, but I'd just like everybody to know that if you voted in August, you voted absentee, then that application was good for August and November. So I will automatically send you a ballot. I just received them, I think it was last Wednesday. Then I received the media for the ballots last Thursday. So they have to be tested and everything. So I'm now in the process of mailing them out. So it's a process. It's not a process where you just drop a ballot in an envelope and send it out. There's a process and a meaning to everything as we go along with this process. So I want everyone to know to be patient. You will get them in plenty of time, but I suggest that you drop them off in the drop box. And we have one out in the parking lot near the police vehicles. And we have another one inside City Hall near our office. And, and City Hall is open from eight AM to four thirty, Monday through Friday. Also remember, there's two sides to your ballot. You can vote straight party. You do not have to. You can mix your ballot. You can split your ticket. There's a nonpartisan section. Once you start that section, which is located on the front portion of your ballot, pay attention to where it says do not vote for more than, and don't go over that number. Turn your ballot over and continue to vote. The, uh, there are several proposals, and there's a proposal for the city of Lathrow Village as well. So I just suggest that you take your time, vote with either a black or blue ink pen. Nothing red, no other colors but black or blue. We, I have to have the ballots back into me before eight PM, Election Day, which is November third. But now with the new court ruling, with the ballots being postmarked by November second, then they will be accepted and counted if I, if I receive your ballot by November seventeenth. So that's something totally new, but it's the new rule.
When did that happen, Yvette?
I just got word, today is Monday, Friday. Around six, I received a notification from the State Bureau of Elections around six PM.
Wow.
When, when will those mailed in ballots be counted?
On the seventeenth. That's the last day for the Oakland County Board of Canvassers. That's the last day that they meet.
So even the ones that are dropped off in the drop box beforehand, they all get counted later on, or on the seventeenth?
The ones that's dropped off, and I received them before eight PM, November third, which is Election Day, they're counted on Election Day.
Oh, okay.
And I think they're working on something where we may be able to count them the day before. I've not received official word, so I'll talk about that a little bit more once I receive the official word on that. So it's a lot of new things happening with this election, but we'll work through that as well. So technically, the, the actual winners will not be announced, like, as they were previously. I'm not sure. Yeah, that's, that's interesting. Then my other question was, say that you did ask for that ballot, the, the absentee ballot, and in the August election, you did not have the absentee, but you voted in person. Will that person still receive the absentee ballot for the? Great question. No, if you did not vote absentee in August, then I need an absent voter application from you for the November third election. Okay. So if you didn't vote absentee in November, it does not prevent you, I'm sorry, if you didn't vote absentee in August, it does not prevent you from voting absentee in November. Plus reapply. Okay. All right. To vote absentee.
So I got this question. So, so what if you did vote absentee and you got, you have an absentee ballot now, but you want to vote in person? What do you do?
Take your ballot with you to the polls on Election Day. And once you speak with the election inspectors, you physically give them, you surrender your ballot to them. Then they'll give you a new ballot to vote in the polls.
Good information.
Yeah, it is. You have choices.
You're all set, Yvette?
I am all set. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any reports of boards, commissions, and committees?
Yeah, I'll give one. Am I on mute? No, I'm not on mute. You need to make sure I wasn't on mute. Yeah, for the Infrastructure Committee, just a reminder that on November third, there'll be, there will be a road proposal on the ballot. We do have several town hall meetings scheduled. The first one is coming up on Sunday, October fourth at three PM. And we'll discuss the ballot, and then we'll throw it open for questions and answers and comments. And so that'll be the first one. There's another one on Thursday, October eighth at seven PM. Then following that, there'll be one on Thursday, the twenty-second at seven PM and Sunday, November first at, at three PM. So there's four opportunities to, live setting via Zoom to learn about the proposal. We will record at least one of those sessions, probably one of the first two sessions, and then make it available in, in various places. So if you can't make the town halls, you can at least listen in, in the static mode to what, what went down at those meetings. In addition, I want to encourage people to go out to www.fixlvroads, so fix, LV as in Lathrow Village, roads.com, so www.fixlvroads.com. That site has a comprehensive set of information about the election. It has the recommendation, it has the actual ballot language. It has maps showing which streets are eligible for consideration under, under this proposal. It's got a cost calculator, so you can click on the map interactively and it'll show you your taxable value, your current taxable value of your house, and what that translates to in, in terms of a yearly cost for this proposal. There, there, there's a whole lot more, but basically, pretty much everything you need to know is out there on fixlvroads.com. But again, I encourage you to attend a, a town hall for a more interactive conversation about it. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else for any boards, commissions, or committees?
Just one question for Bruce. Has the Zoom number been posted already?
Yeah, the dates, with the dates. Good question. The Zoom, the Zoom information has been posted. It, it's on fixlvroads.com at the very bottom. It has all the information to connect. And I should mention that, you know, you can, i- i- if you, if you don't have the, the video capabilities, you can still connect and participate fully just through the phone, the standard telephone. You know, like a, like a, a conference call. So that's, that's still a possibility. So all that information is available on fixlvroads.com. It's also on the city website. So you can go there as well and find out the, the connectivity information.
Can you put the website in the chat and then maybe just the dates of the, the town halls in the chat?
Yeah, I can do that.
Thank you.
And I'll also just give a real quick update on the Planning Commission. At the last Planning Commission meeting, we, we had a new property owner, JMC, I think it's JMC Enterprises. They were, um, we approve, approved their, I'm blanking, I'll have a moment, a moment here. Suzie, are you on the call of the, there was their site plan, their site plan, correct?
Yes, I'm on the call.
Yeah, sites, there's other site plans. All right, sorry. Neurons weren't firing. We also had the, um, other items on the, on the agenda that got pushed back to the October meeting. So talking about the, uh, the sign ordinance. As members of council know, we're, we're working on a new, new sign ordinance, and so that will be discussed at the October meeting. The Planning Commission was also slated to talk at our last meeting about providing input from a, a planning perspective for potential marijuana licensing should council approve, prove that, prove an ordinance in the future. So we were not able to get to that as well. The, the JMC discussion took quite a while. So, so the marijuana licensing and application process discussion will also take place in the October meeting.
Thank you.
The October meeting, the date again is?
Uh, I gotta find my calendar. The October meeting is.
October twentieth.
Thank you. October twentieth.
Thank you.
I'll just add to that, that the JMC site plan approval came contingent with zoning board of appeal approval, so council will see that as a ZBA.
Yeah, thanks, Scott. I was, I was fumbling for my notes and I can't find them, so that's why, that's why I was lapsing.
Can I just, um, are you finished, Bruce?
Yep.
Okay. Just really quick, I wanted to say that SimCOG, I know there's been a lot of help needed for the stay-at-home employee, employees attending for their, their children as well as elderly parents. And I wanted to make a note, SimCOG has held several roundtables of resources, providing resources that support employees during this cold, during this pandemic who stay home. So if you go onto sim dot, simcoG.org and say that you need help in how to manage your elderly parents, how to manage having children at home while you're working at home and staying sane, they have some amazing resources for you there. Again, that's simcoG.org.
They have some amazing resources for you there. Again, that's, uh, simcoG.org. And, um, that's really all. They've had, uh, um, many things going on, but, um, and the big meeting is in a couple of weeks. The General Assembly meeting is in a couple of weeks. But I wanted to mention that to the community to get help. I'm hearing a lot of people needing help and, and so there's some there. That's all I have.
Is there, uh, any other reports?
Just for the Infrastructure Committee, um, do we need a council panel like we did last year? In case of your questions?
Well, it would be, I'd love the support of having people, the council members to the extent that they can. I know there's, I know there's four, four town halls, but to the extent that you guys can, uh, you know, sign in, uh, to the meetings, that would be great.
Okay.
Well, the task force be, uh, would the task force be there as well?
They have all been invited. Uh, again, uh, you know, there's four meetings, so I don't know if they can, if they can make them all. Um, but, uh, hopefully we, you know, la- last time, I think, I'm trying to remember, I think at the, at a minimum, I think we had three members, uh, for each town hall. So I'm, I'm hoping we'll, we'll, we'll have, uh, uh, a, a fair amount of people show up, uh, that were on the committee.
Okay, thank you.
You're there.
Um, do we have any new business or unfinished business?
No.
Thank you. Um, public comment. Anyone that wants to address the council? Anyone? Nothing, Kelda?
Nope, nothing.
Okay. Um, mayor and council comments. Anything from the council?
Uh, yeah, just like to thank all the people who came out for the, um, uh, corridor cleanup on Saturday. Uh, we had another successful cleanup. Can definitely see the before and after dis- difference for the areas that were done. So, uh, uh, thanks to everybody for that. I, I, it's my understanding from, from Suzie that we've adopted uh, those roads so that instead of doing it once a year, we'll be doing it four times a year, um, I believe. And so, uh, um, or three or four times a year. I see Cheryl smiling, so I don't know. Maybe, maybe I misspoke. Um, but, uh, yeah, it's, it's, it's great to get people out there and, and, uh, you know, spend a couple hours doing some good for the city.
Yeah, was very interesting. Um, cause also the lights went out, um, on South Hill and the eleven mile at the same time. So that was very, um, interesting to, to navigate that, too. Um, also, one thing that was, uh, brought up, not only on our favorite villager, but I also have talked to, uh, some residents. And that is about the situation of speeding through our neighborhoods. And, um, which is very concerning. I know that Lathrow Boulevard is one that probably gets the most, um, offenders. Um, and then, and, and I'm not saying this in any type of biased ways, but I'm thinking that maybe Santa Barbara might come in and at a, a close second because I can literally hear how fast somebody's going, not see them, but hear it, which is scary. Um, and just some, eh, just the fact of, and I think this is all over. It is not just Lathrow Village and the fact that there's a lot of people that are just disobeying the law when it comes to, um, um, speeding, um, blowing the stop sign, which I've seen also near, um, Credit Union. And I know that we talked before, um, with Chief McKee about, you know, being more, um, visible out there. And I know I've seen them. Are you saying something, Scott? Yeah. So, um, what was brought up, and I've seen opposition of it, and I've seen pro, you know, everyone, some pros, some opposed to it. And that is the thing about speed bumps. Not permanent. You've talked about permanent speed bumps. We also talked about the type of speed bumps that could be taken up in the wintertime. So what I did promise, um, some residents is that I would bring it up now to, uh, discuss among the council. You don't have to do it now per se, but just something for, um, either we can talk about it now or something to, uh, have in your mind that something has to be done about it because it is, um, that, to watch it, it is scary. And I actually saw, um, a mail truck blow through the sign here on Santa Barbara, which I didn't know a mail truck could even get to speed up that fast going down La Crosse. And it, and it was amazing, but yet it was very scary to watch that.
Yeah, I can. No, go ahead, Ian.
Okay, so just, just a quick input on speed bumps. So, uh, speed bumps also slow down police cars. So I, I don't think it would be a an advantage to putting those down. But at the same time, the vast majority of speeders are Lathrow villagers. They're not people that come into Lathrow Village. If you want to be honest about it, I've seen several residents that just blow through stop signs. And, you know, if you want to use C- Quick Fix and take a picture and, and a license plate, you can do that. But, you know, if you know the neighbor, you can tell that person to slow down. I mean, and, and Chief McKee will tell you, at least eighty percent of these violators are, are Lath- Lathrow Village residents. I mean, what, what's, what's the hurry? You've got kids on the road and everything. It's ridiculous.
Yeah, I can tell you from the infrastructure perspective, we have talked about speed bumps, um, and we, at, at least as a committee, we decided not to recommend them. Um, I know we had a myriad of reasons, but the ones that can, without my notes in front of me, the ones that I can think of off the top of my head, um, are, um, well, fir- first off is, is that, uh, from a winner perspective, you've, you've got, uh, issues with plows. Um, our, our city engineer was, was very, uh, recommended very strongly against them because, you know, he says in other communities that have them, they regularly break, break their um, plow blades in the winter. All it takes is an inch or two of snow and, and, you know, the, the plowers can't see them. Um, there's also issues with respect to noise. So, uh, while everybody, you know, wants them, the people who are directly near them, um, you know, tend to, uh, complain quite a bit about the noise. So if you get a older car or a car with a, you know, that hits it fast, it makes a lot of noise. So you have noise coming in, uh, you know, throughout the, throughout the day. Um, there were a couple of other reasons. Um, I, I don't have them at my fingertips, but, um, but the other thing I would say, too, is just, you know, building on what Kelly says, I, I think, um, you know, I think this is really an issue of enforcement. It would be nice to see, you know, more visibility of the police. I don't know if that's possible, given this, the, the amount that we, we staff, but it would be, you know, great to see more visibility, you know, within the, within the neighborhood because i- i- like Kelly said, it's not just, there's somebody who, who walks a lot in the city. Um, you know, I see people running stop signs constantly. I've, I've had at least once a month, I have an incident where somebody blows through a stop sign and comes close to clipping one of my dogs because they're usually, you know, six, eight, ten feet out in front of me on a leash. Um, but, um, it, it would be great to see more of a presence if, if you get it.
Yeah, let me just add, uh, so the speed bumps, that's an added cost for the city also. So I don't think it's an advantage to, to you know, adding speed bumps. So I agree with everything Bruce said and, and the opposite, observation of Mayor Garrett. Um, bottom line is, you know, if, if you know your, your neighbor is speeding through the, the neighborhood, you gotta say something. I mean, it's just, we can't just post it on villagers and expect anything to get, get done differently, right? So.
If I can interject, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, you know, we are, are pretty vigilant in, uh, you know, in patrolling and, and, uh, issuing citations where it's necessary and needed. Um, the only thing I would suggest that is if any of the residents, um, you know, do see a repeated, uh, offenses being, you know, broken, uh, running stop signs or speeds, please feel free to call my office. Um, we try to move people around based on kind of where the complaints are coming from. I mean, we are, obviously, we know our, um, our streets pretty well and where, uh, you know, where a lot of the activity is. But sometimes some, you know, now with people being home with COVID, they're seeing things differently than, than, uh, when everybody's at work. So I would just suggest if anybody uh, has any type of traffic complaints that they'd like us to address, we'd be happy to, uh, to move people around into different spots. Uh, we, we try to do our best. But again, we are limited with, uh, you know, with our personnel.
Chief, would you share the non-emergency number?
Absolutely. Non-emergency number is two four eight, three five four, ten ten. Or you can email me at policechief@lathrowvillage.org.
So, um, here's my thoughts on, and I know that, you know, I'm someone that I, I'm sitting here on the corner of one of the busiest streets, um, one, I said one of the busiest streets. And the fact of, um, knowing that there is a good distance of where the last stop sign is to hitting the next busiest street, which will be Bloomfield, it's very concerning. And though the noise of a, um, speed bump, though the, I agree with you, if you know the neighbor who is speeding through your neighborhood, yes, you should tell them. But in my situation, I don't even see it. I hear it more than I see it. Um, I think this is something that we really should be, um, um, talking more about for maybe the temporary speed bumps, only because I know that, um, on Santa Barbara, I have a few neighbors that have little kids, little, little kids. And they don't have sidewalks. You know, my side has sidewalks, but behind me, um, where they live particularly, they do not. And that concerns me. And I think that if there's something that we can do as a council to try to deter of speeders to prevent someone's kid being hit or dog, I think that's something we should consider instead of just, you know, um, the inconvenience of, of a few things. So.
Well, I know this isn't called, isn't the official statement of this, this device, but what about Rent a Robo Radar? You know, those, uh, speed limit indicators, uh, on the side of the road. I don't know if the city does own one of those. Not exactly sure what the official title of that is, but it, it, it's actually posting the speed limit of the vehicle as it approaches that, that mechanism. Not sure.
I'll learn, yeah. Uh, we, we do not, as far as I'm aware, unless Cheryl knows differently, uh, we do not own anything like that. Um, we have looked at in the past of purchasing, um, a speed sign that you're talking about that is run on solar and/or battery. Um, so that'll be something that we could definitely look at, uh, purchasing. And that unit is somewhat mobile. That can be moved around throughout the city. I believe it comes with just a couple of bolts to bolt it to a pole.
Yeah, yeah.
I just, just, just to, um, mention, I, I found my notes from, from the meeting where we, we discussed, uh, speed bumps. And here, here's the list of, of, um, of the negatives behind them. Um, one is the cost of, the cost is relatively expensive. They're about four thousand dollars each. Um, most people don't want them in the front, in front of their house. Uh, they tend to be noisy, issue for plows, uh, lots of broken, broken plow blades. Um, as far as recommended guidelines for, um, speed bumps, our streets are not long enough. Um, so there's a recommendation. I, I don't, I don't know what the specific recommendation is, but this is, this was from our engineer, um, that usually typically have a, a particular length minimum before installing a speed bump, and we don't make those minimums in most cases. And then he notes that, um, in those cases that we, we do have long enough stretches, uh, where, where a speed bump uh, would be applicable. We already have stop signs, um, in, in those, in those, those, those areas anyways. Um, and then, uh, it does cause the roads to degrade a little bit quicker. And then the other thing that he mentioned, um, was that, um, most of the communities that, that he works in, um, what the, the guidelines that they use in terms of, um, uh, if they do allow them, um, is that all, all, um, residents, you know, within a certain distance have to be okay with it because of the noise and, and, and the noise concern. So, um, that's, that's what I have on my list from, from the night that we talked about that.
All right. Well, um, one is just where I wanted to bring that up to have a start, um, thinking, um, thinking about it. Um, of what we can do because something has to be done, um, about it. Um, and then maybe, um, Chief and, um, Cheryl and a couple other council people. I don't know. Maybe we put something together and we can kind of hash it out to see what we can do. Um, any other council member comments?
Uh, just one observation. So the, the wall in the alley looks pretty much complete. Appreciate, uh, all the effort from code enforcement. And as I, um, pointed out in that email, there is a gap there. So I wanted to find out, um, obviously you all are following up, but, uh, just want to make sure that gap isn't just gonna be, you know, staying there. If they, they have a plan to close that gap because it, it, it is unsightly for the neighbor. And also I've directed the neighbor to contact, uh, Cheryl or Kelda to get additional, um, insight, uh, based on that agreement that uh, he, 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 uh, offered up his water and electricity to get that, that, uh, wall done when the, the owner of the building want to do that. And this is a quote unquote from him. He, uh, that was a quote, direct quote. So I'll ask, I've asked him to contact code enforcement, so he will be doing that.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Can I take a mo- that? Oh, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Oh, second.
And we are adjourned.